Somebody grabbed a hold of that and all of a sudden it was going to be part of it. So, there was a lot of confusion around it. The only reason I'm suggesting to bring it back now is it seems to be maybe the last opportunity to save some cost. If we do it now, they can reconfigure the lights, the striping, do it all as part of the current project versus coming back a year from now and say, "Okay, let's try it." Now, I've got to restripe it, we've got to move the signaling heads around, plus people have gotten used to a traffic pattern after construction. So, I just don't want to miss a window of opportunity to make a fairly simple change that can be undone if we find it doesn't work, instead of waiting to figure out, "Ah, let's try it after we've gotten into the new traffic pattern after all the construction."
And we had a cost. Somebody quoted us a cost for that striping. It was not huge, but it also wasn't insignificant, but I don't remember what it was.
It was around a hundred thousand.
A hundred thousand.
Different striping? Because don't you have to stripe it anyhow?
Right.
Yeah, but making a different striping would be, let's say, we went four lane and a year from now or two years from now, we decide, "Okay, we do want to do a three lane." It's a hundred thousand dollars, or at least.
Stand blast off what's currently there, repaint the new.
But if we do it after the construction is finished, how much does it add? Because you have to stripe it anyhow.
Part of the construction.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
So, it's when you would switch it from one to the other, it would be the additional hundred thousand to restripe it, but initially we have to stripe it at some point when it's done.
So, what was the evidence that it was not a good idea to have three lanes? There's a lot of evidence about why it's safer and the doors crashes. Was there any evidence?
There wasn't any evidence at the time. It was totally, and I mean, I voted for this resolution in part, in part, Tim convinced me, and in part, I just thought this is not worth a big fight and that there was such strong citizen input for four lanes, but none of it was based on any evidence. It was all very subjective.
There were, there were some. I mean, the county sheriff, Sheriff Pickett and Fire Chief Hopple both were in favor of keeping the four lane configuration.
But not based on any evidence?
Based on what?
No, well, it was based on their opinion that it would take longer for an emergency response to get through town.
But it sounds like in the evidence they presented from other cities, that's not actually the case.
Yeah, there were anecdotal evidence that was presented that, was it New Hampton that switched back?
There was one city that switched back, it was New Hampton. They had a bus with a disabled child that had to stop and load and unload him, which then backed up the traffic. And so, they didn't switch back because of traffic issues in general. They had a single situation that caused that to switch backs. We talked about that as well.
The other one on it was that, and that's one of the things I brought, pointed out, was the DOT's own evidence showed that a three lane configuration would actually make the intersection of 12th Street West worse for traffic than it currently is with a four lane configuration. And I think 5th Street West, I'm trying to remember, there were two, there were two intersections on that west side. No, 12th Street definitely was one, that their projection showed a three lane configuration made it actually worse.
I think that's possible. So many years out and so much traffic increase, there was a couple that would possibly be worse.
Yeah, and then, you know, again, just looking at, I think we need to look at lights in general.
Right.
How our light configuration is and how that would play out, whether it's 15th and 16th Street, 4th Street. Ultimately, as when we look at, in the future, as we look at 4th Street coming south, that Burger King to Dairy Queen area, that's going to be a three lane. And I think people have already seen that from 2nd Avenue to Bremer, that three lane configuration actually makes it a little smoother for turning in situations there for people.
I mean, that is something different now that, you know, that we do have some experience with that, whereas when we discussed this the last time, I don't think we had any lanes like that.
May I, I'd like to add some comments to this. I agree with Tim that I'm not ready until the Parkway is done and we see what the traffic configuration is. One of the, one of the cities that has three lane that's referred to in the study is Clear Lake, but it also states that it's on the eastern, or on the western part of town and where there's not a lot of businesses and things, so traffic can move through. The bike lane idea, when that first came out, I have to have a conversation with member, one of the members of Bicycle Club here in town, and they were definitely opposed to it. And that was one of the reasons, I think, that that idea got scrapped. They said, "We see absolutely no reason to have a bike lane on Bremer Avenue." Third, or the other thing that's come to mind is, and I don't know about the other cities, Spencer's and some of the other ones that have three lanes through town, but if I'm going to parallel park on Bremer Avenue in a three lane, how far is traffic going to back up while I do that?
Should be easier because you have an extra five feet to work with.
Not necessarily, but what's, what's the traffic going to do? Because now you're partly in the traffic lane and partly in the quote, "extra five feet," and...
Usually what happens in that situation is the cars go around you and use the middle part.
But it's illegal.
You can go in and out of the left lane. It's a dotted, usually a dotted line even in the left lane.
Well, one of the opinions I got because of Highway 3 East, and I think I visited with Chief Purcell about it, is someone, not necessarily in this community, but crossed the yellow line to get into the left turn lane. Or was it someone taking a driving test? And the instructor failed whoever it was because you...
It is true. It is a turning lane, it's not a passing lane. So, you would have to, you'd have to mark it.
And Highway 3 East, technically, other than left turn, you can't cross that yellow line. And, because it's solid from where it starts all the way out to where it ends. So, so those are some of my concerns. I mean, if you've got a little tight based on some little elderly ladies trying to parallel park, you could have traffic backed up quite a ways and, or take your chances of an illegal lane usage.
Or maybe an elderly man.
Yeah.
I can't parallel park and save my life.
Maybe a middle-aged woman, that's why I park around on the, in the back.
So, those are just some thoughts.
I hate parallel plugging.
That I have.
And again, not discounting what, what the mayor has said, because there's some validity to it, but this is where the discussion seemed to go last time was similar to the discussion we had around the inflatable dam. The science says it was going to work, but everybody in the community says there's no way an inflatable dam is going to save us from flooding. Well, in that case, the science has proven the dam is a good option. The science, the math, the, the studies they do, to me overwhelmingly say you're going to address safety issues, you're going to make your downtown, at least on the east side, if we do this there, a little easier for folks to use both for vehicle traffic as well as pedestrian traffic as well as shopping, and you still move the same number, if not more, vehicles through it without having some of the issues that we currently have now. So, and I think for those of us that go east during the construction now, we're experiencing a one lane going east with a turn lane. So, I mean, we're getting through the First Street East intersection, fine, yeah, there's time, busy traffic, it's backed up past the old Stummy Building, those type of things. But again, we had backups when Tarex would let out at 3:30 in the afternoon. So, you're not, there's no traffic pattern that's not going to cause backups. It's just, can you enhance everybody's experience by making this change now? And I certainly understand waiting until the Parkway is actually up, traffic flowing on it, to be, that just seems to be postponing something and adding costs later on. If we find out that it doesn't enhance it, let's change it back to four lanes, but maybe save some time and headache by doing it on the front end versus the back end.
So, what do we know for sure about finish time for the Parkway and finish time for Bremer? Which will be finished first? Do we know?
Bremer will be finished this fall, late fall is what they're talking about. The next year, you do the streetscape with the trees and the planters and the benches, et cetera. The Parkway, I mean, Mike, I think it's fair from the progress they're making, it could be late summer, early fall. I mean, it's, it's moving right along.
Labor Day of next year.
Yep.
Within a year.
We were just out there today and it's, man, it's moving. It's really something, so.
I would like to make a comment about the parking issue, as the only person on this council who actually owns a business that is on, in downtown on Bremer Avenue. We have had people who have refused to park on Bremer Avenue because it's extremely dangerous to exit your car. I do park there because nobody else will park there. So, I save the better parking spots for employees and clients who don't want to exit on Bremer Avenue. Having an extra five feet would allow these little old men and little old ladies to be able to exit their cars without being concerned about getting hit. And now, when you are parallel parking, which I would have to say, I'm probably not the greatest parallel parker in the world either, but when you do parallel park even now, you're backing traffic up in that lane. So, what's going to happen? The people are in the back of that lane are trying to shoot around in the other lane, creating an even more dangerous situation.
That's exactly one of the things they pointed out.
So, having, even if it did back up the traffic and people were reticent about passing in the middle lane and they were waiting, it would be a much safer situation than people trying to cut around and save a few seconds. So, I think that, yes, it would require some people to be patient and wait for those people who were trying to parallel park to allow them to finish to parallel park. But, you know, I personally think that there are just so many positives to going to a three lane conversion that it makes a lot of sense trying to do that now right off the bat and wait until we have some four or five years' experience or whatever it is with the Parkway. I mean, if we voted for the Parkway because of the confidence that it was going to reduce the traffic on Bremer Avenue, I think that we have to stick with that rationale and say that there will be a reduction of semi-traffic and highway traffic coming down Bremer Avenue, and that will allow us to be able to have a road diet. The other point I wanted to make too about downtown is that if we're looking at trying to make downtown more attractive, a more attractive atmosphere for people to come and shop, having a four lane multiple highway coming through town does not provide a very good shopping atmosphere. I heard one person compared it to an airport runway, and you don't really have a atmosphere or a situation where people feel safe and comfortable coming down to shop and do their business. And I think this study has shown that some of the places, what really struck me was in Des Moines in the Ingersoll area. They went to a three lane and had been a four lane. The merchants were all really concerned about what would happen. And after the three lane road diet occurred, they were almost unanimous in their praise of having that and what it did for the business area. So, to me, the issue is not so much do we do three lane or four lane, but where do we start with three lane? And, you know, do we start it, would we start it at the bridge? Would we start it at 4th Street? And I understand there are issues with semi-traffic going to Nestle that might make that difficult. I've heard suggestions that we started all the way on 7th Street West, which is really kind of the start of the business district. It would seem to me that we probably, in my mind at least, it's not so much do we go to four lane or three lane, it's where do we start the three lane? It would seem to me to make a lot of sense to start it at First Street, on First Street West, because we already have turning signals and traffic messing up there. I think it would be, it would be easier to have, you know, the bridge not be a four lane bridge already. That's going to be simpler for traffic. So, I think that's a discussion that we probably need to have with the DOT, and I think that originally, the striping was going to be four lane up to First Street and then three lane continuing east on Bremer Avenue. So, I don't know what the timeline is on this or, you know, when we need to make a discussion with the DOT on what's going to happen with this and talk about costs and traffic lights and that. I guess that's the process issue that I have. As far as I'm concerned, I don't think we need to wait until we see what Cedar River Drive does to our traffic downtown. I think we should make a decision on this.
Cedar River Drive, Parkway, my street.
Oh, sorry. Cedar River, Parkway. Well, maybe we should see how much we can divert traffic on the Cedar River Drive. Cedar River Parkway, there's too many Cedar River roads around here.
Yeah, I agree with you, Rod. I think I don't need to wait for the traffic patterns from the Cedar River Parkway to think this is a good idea. I mean, I'm a big believer in science and this is very compelling evidence. It's safer, it will, I think, slow people down and hopefully help them see what's there in downtown instead of whizzing past it and stopping shop. And the accident data is pretty compelling, and they showed that, you know, for the most part, whether your drivers are teenagers and less experienced or elderly, it did not tend to increase accidents, it lowered them. So, I agree with you. I think it's a matter of where do we stop and start it and if, you know, how will it impact semi-traffic? And I have heard people say, "Well, what about farm implements?" But I haven't seen any evidence about counts, about how many large farm vehicles go through town and what happens when that happens. If I was driving an ambulance, I would like to have that middle lane, I think, to be able to use. If you're in a big city, when an ambulance tries to go through a four lane road with no escape route in the middle, it's a mess. And so, I think the data is very compelling and I'd be in favor of looking at it seriously, even before the Parkway's finished.
I thought it was a wonderful moment of irony when we had the discussion the last time, and one of the questions was, "So, what do you do in a farm town like Waverly when somebody wants to bring a really wide combine down the main drag?" And one citizen, who was pretty sure that was a stupid idea if you go to three lanes, put a photo on the internet showing a combine going down Bremer Avenue with the four lane configuration, and what it was showing me was that that piece of equipment required two lanes. Wouldn't have made any difference. So, I didn't think that was very persuasive. But it was, I thought it was interesting that that was there. I'm just thinking about, you know, road fights. The city of Cedar Falls has had a wonderful time fighting about their roundabouts, and somebody even said that the mayor was going to lose his job over it. I guess that didn't happen. But what strikes me is, I love eating in Waverly, but sometimes I eat in Cedar Falls just for a little variety. And every time my wife and I are in the car, driving down Main Street in Cedar Falls, we say things to each other like, "Boy, this is really slow, this windy Main Street." I've often said this, "It's really slow." And my wife says, "Yes, isn't that wonderful? Nobody is stuck, the traffic gets in and out, people can park." And I'm just thinking, "I really like this ambiance." I'll bet you that the merchants don't really dislike that. So, in terms of how's it going to help the merchants, I don't think that's, that's an issue. I appreciated Rod's comment about parking on Bremer. I've mentioned this before, I've had three experiences in the last 10 years, because that's how long I've been here. In my third and I think final time to live in this town, three experiences on Bremer Avenue where I've gotten out of my car on Bremer and almost lost my door. And my wife says, "What you're not mentioning is you could have lost you too." And one of those was about a half block from Rod Rinkow's office, because I was trying to get a haircut, actually. You know, it's a pretty sobering moment when you have some, realize somebody is not really that interested in what's going on in the parking lane. I really think that three lanes, two lanes, yeah, two lanes plus the turn lane would solve some of that, probably solve a lot of it. So, and in terms of what Ann has to say, I have thought that the DOT's argument about this has been compelling from the beginning, which is why I became the sacrificial lamb and voted no when everybody else is voting yes. I did have a number of people tell me after the vote, "Well, if we had realized what you guys were really talking about, we would have called up our council person." And I said, "Well, I'd like to say better late than ever, but too late, we voted already." So, there are some people out there who I think would probably speak up and say they liked three lanes, but they just didn't do it because they didn't really know that that was an issue.
I mean, it's interesting in terms of the feedback. I mean, at that time, and that was one of the reasons I voted yes, is that most of the citizens who contacted me wanted four lanes, you know, regardless of any evidence of anything, but, but that's what they wanted. And several were business people here in town. This time around, I'm getting just the opposite. I mean, probably more or less the same number of citizens contacting me, but virtually all of them in favor of three lanes.
I think when Bremer Avenue construction gets done would be the ideal time to implement this because now we're all driving around orange cones and in two lanes. So, I don't know, I think it's a, I think it's a very good idea.
Yes, now we know how to drive on two lanes.
And if you look at the data about delaying commute, it delayed, in that one town, it went from 50 seconds to 68 seconds was the average delay in the commute. Now, that doesn't mean that they have the identical length of street that we do, but...
It was a 30% increase.
Hmm?
It was a 30%.
Thirty-six percent increase, yes.
30%, yeah.
Yep.
I mean, I, I have to agree with Rod that I think the question, I like the idea of three lanes, especially through downtown, but in that area between First and 4th, Bremer West, I think that I'm really not excited about the option that's given there. The version of three lanes where it's pretty much four lanes with turning lanes, the layout that I've seen there really does not appeal to me. I like the idea of the three lanes east of the river, but I don't really want to support the configuration that they're showing west of the river. It seems like the traffic is just as close to the parking lane as it currently is, so I don't think you're going to be, you know, increasing safety that much on that side of the river. And I realize it's because of the Nestle trucks and a lot of the other, like, things that are unique to that area, but that area between First and 4th on the west side of Bremer needs a better design for me to get behind that side. I agree that after construction over seems to be an ideal time to make this change. Everyone is going to be adjusting to new traffic and new traffic patterns, so a restripe is a good time for everyone to relearn how to drive those, those roads. So, that makes sense to me. But I support the three lanes on the east side, but I struggle with it on the west side just because I don't like the layout that I'm seeing there. It doesn't seem like a true three lanes to me.
Are you referring to the map?
I'm referring to that map.
Which is practically impossible to see.
And I'll tell you one thing, that I didn't get, that there was another version of that, First and 4th, that didn't have that, that had four, four lanes, and then it had a left turn lane going south, and then it, the only one lane went, went west, and the same at First. So, it was a different layout than this. But I didn't get that from them when I put it, put it on the...
Again, maybe back to kind of the question of the mechanics here. Since we voted to stay with four lanes, I'm assuming we would have to approach the DOT and say, "We'd like to revisit this. Could you come and, if nothing else, refresh the community as well as the council on your recommendation? And then, give us some, an opportunity to have some dialogue on, can we do bits and pieces of it? And if we did, where would those natural breaks be, that type of thing? And then, at that point, decide if we want to put together another resolution or... And, you know, again, mechanically, I don't know, since there's a resolution out there saying we're doing one thing, is it just as simple as doing a resolution saying we're doing something else or how we back out of one decision into another?
And I think it's kind of hard from, kind of the rules of how you do this because you have half a new council, so are they bound by every decision prior to them without having a voice on it? I'm not sure how you can do that. I think you can just simply create a new resolution to take another look at this and to move forward and, you know, we can talk to the DOT, and I think Dave Little was the individual. We actually almost tried to get him here tonight a little bit, it's just, it's kind of busy season for them too. So, we can try to have him come in the next couple of meetings just to give that refresher, and then have you decide again at that point, do you want a formal resolution for or against, or would you want it that same meeting? And we can have some dialogue about that going forward here. But I think you can just have another resolution that make that change if you choose to do so as a council, since it's a vastly different council than maybe the first resolution. We can look into that, but I don't see why that would be any kind of an issue that you could do that, so.
Again, I'm hoping everybody feels comfortable, we're staying to the spirit of the resolution. I know, and I can understand Tim's position where he'd like to have some history of what the Parkway actually does to traffic flow, and I think that would be 100% supporting the resolution. Again, I'm just wondering if we'd miss an opportunity by not revisiting it now.
Now, could you remind a new councilman, a resolution only requires one vote as opposed to an ordinance which required three?
Right, right.
Okay, so, I suppose my only concern with the resolution is because we're not voting on it three times, making sure that we're in some sense moving through the process less slowly enough that we're getting sufficient feedback from community members. I don't want to kind of rush this and suddenly have everyone saying, "Well, you know, we didn't know you were talking about this because it only takes one vote." So, I suppose that's kind of my feeling, is if we do revisit this, to move slowly enough that we're getting plenty of feedback from the community.
So, would it be, then would you have the DOT come to a work session like this and present it and then put it on a future meeting as a resolution, or how would you do that then?
That's certainly up to you. I mean, we were kind of hoping to get some of that, you know, tonight as well and...
But I mean, is that one way to do it? So that you got public feedback and people could see the presentation and then...
We still have time yet because they're going to be done Labor Day this summer, this year for Bremer, as far as before they restripe?
I think just the east side, I think.
Yeah. So, some things to think about are, you know, like maybe the July study session, which would be 23rd?
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
I think so.
See if maybe Dave could come down then. There'd also maybe be an opportunity for public forum. I kind of like them when they're held right before a council meeting, like maybe from 6:00 to 7:00.
I mean, I agree with Brian. We, I think we do need to give opportunities for a fresh look at this for everybody, so maybe an open house before a meeting. Again, is there anything saying we can't have a, I want to say, public forum, but before, or...
An open house?
An open house. An open house, but when we do rezoning and that type of thing, public hearing.
An ordinance would...
Could we have a public hearing in the front end of the night we're going to do the ordinance or the resolution? You know, again, open house would be great, maybe a week or two, have a public hearing and then a potential vote on a new resolution.
Even potentially a discussion, as Rod was talking about, maybe just doing the three lane on the east side for now, and then having a chance to take a look at what, what we do for configurations for, because, yeah, for the west side to 4th Street with the truck traffic, that seems kind of convoluted in terms of if we're going to have three lane going all the way through town, that's one thing, but then if we're going to have three lane and suddenly go to four lane with some odd turning signals, and then we're going to go three lane again, and then we're going to get to 15th and 16th, and we're going to have some odd configurations there for the schools, and then go, I want to make, I would rather have it thought out and done all the way through. And certainly on the east side, it seems to make a lot of sense to be able to go three lane all the way through, all the way through.
I think if they're coming back to, with a refreshed presentation, I mean, I think we can explicitly ask them to look at some of these intersections that we've talked about.
If we're going to have enough information on, for me, the one, the source, the spot that jumps out, I think they can do First through 4th, probably figure something that would make a little more sense than what they've shown previously. 15th and 16th is the big concern with the school traffic. That's, that's the one area that I think we need to know.
But I think if we tell them these are...
So, what's your concern that it'll get backed up?
If these are our concerns, we can ask them to include that as part of the presentation. If these are our concerns, we can ask them to include that as part of the presentation.
Part of it's backed up, part of it's just the lighting in general there. I've heard people asking about, can we make the 15th Street light by the library be a flashing yellow most of the time with a flashing red to turn on to Bremer, and have 16th be the only one that changes? Is, is that a possibility until, except for during school time, for like when the buses are coming through, and then it becomes a, an actual turn signal for traffic, parents picking up kids at West Cedar?
So maybe we need to ask the DOT, what's the safest configuration for that two blocks?
That, that...
If we went to three lane, what's the safest?
My biggest concern would be there.
How would you time the lights, et cetera? Because I do think on the west side of the, on the west side, as you head up the hill toward Duos, I mean, that's a pedestrian no man's land. If you, cars come over that hill at a pretty good speed, and if you're trying to walk across, you have nowhere to hide, sort of. And so, that's a very wide street when you're on foot, or if you're on a bike, or if you're trying to get to the fairgrounds, or the pool, or wherever, so. But I agree, going four to three, four to three is very confusing.
Yeah.
So I was going to just say that Dave Little, when he gave his presentation, he was the, the concept guy about the three lane conversion, but the engineers that are on the project have to create the, the plans to do the markings. And, and those, those contract engineers that they have are going to be the ones doing this kind of thing, and testing different sections, as opposed to Dave himself, who's going to approve what they, what they come up with. So you really have to give them direction, too.
How do we get an audience with the engineers, or how do we hear their...
But they have to have direction from the DOT to move forward with those kind of things, and they have, the DOT has to approve what they add, what they offer.
They'll decide who they want to use. They may do it in-house. It depends on what resources they have available at the time to put together the, the graphics and the drawings, or, or the displays.
But I mean, we could certainly ask, I mean, there's nothing to prevent us from asking them to address, right, even in his presentation, he could consult an engineer, right? Or the appropriate engineers and come...
Dave, yeah, but there's lots of engineers at the DOT, so.
Yeah, I mean, is that timeline still realistic, to work on it this summer?
Yeah, well, let's, let's reach out to Dave, and we've got some time to get back, and we'll, we'll see if he's available sometime in July.
Because Dave will direct the engineers to do it, and most likely it'll be WHGS.
It may very well.
He's currently doing the corridor, and a lot of good engineers doing that work for us. So I mean, but Dave will do the direction, once you give Dave what you want to see. So we'll just reach out to Dave, as Mike said, try and let him know what you're kind of thinking about again, at least revisiting the possibility with some key intersections, having some different configurations, and just, you know, see what he can provide us.
Yeah, I think we want to make it as simple as we can for drivers. And so, you know, if we decided to go three lane, are there exceptions on Bremer Avenue? Are there spots that they think it's safest to keep some sort of four lane configuration, without making it confusing?
Part of my concern is every time you switch from three lanes to four lanes, that's where you're going to have traffic problems in your backups, so.
Well, and the one thing that has made it very clear to me that those are very real issues, is as you're coming across the bridge into east side downtown, using that inside lane as the left turn lane, yeah, no, people just go straight.
Yeah, right, right, exactly.
So that was one of our concepts that was being considered, was on the west side of the river, is to keep the inside lanes as left turn lanes, and to do painted medians. Well, yeah, that is...
Yeah, that's not going to work.
Drivers just can't get in that lane, and they're going to go. So I, you know, that became a real, you know, real apparent, that it may look good on paper, but in reality, you know, we're, we're seeing what drivers are going to do, so.
Except I seem to see that earlier on, and not so much anymore.
And a lot of, I would say, out-of-towners. I mean, the problem is if you're in that lane, thinking, well, that's the lane, that's going straight, and then you suddenly realize, oh, this is the left, yeah.
It's not just out-of-towners, it's local traffic.
So, so we now have a real-world experience that we can, you know, raise this issue and say, well, this has been our experience with the construction, as it's going to play out and be an issue later on, again, transitioning, you know, if we keep changing the configuration on the west side. So again, consistency is best for the drivers, and we'll see what we can come up with.
I think the, the current intersection gives us some insight. I would just caution us not to use it as, this is what normal's going to be, because we don't have the matching striping on the other side, and, you know, that type of thing. I do agree, it's confusing now, just because it's in a construction zone. Yeah, I think out-of-towners get misplaced. I think in-towners, they're just impatient, and they choose it to be the fast lane. I've seen that happen quite often, too.
Would it be possible to put these documents on the city's website and draw, I mean, even though we know we're going to get a refresher, but, you know, maybe have something in the paper that points people to this? That's another way of saying, yes, there's a discussion coming up, and we're going to go, you know, through several weeks of conversation around this, and here's some documents from, you know, granted, they're dated, but here's some things to look at in the meantime.
Can you do that?
Yeah, I think change is really hard for people, and so the more evidence and, and information you can give them from what other cities' experience has been, is helpful.
Well, in the interest of time, I think we've run this through several courses, and around in the circles and things, and the general, the general consensus, as I gather...
We could do roundabouts.
[laughing] Great idea.
Thank you.
That's a great idea.
But I think the general consensus is that Mike or James or someone get a hold of the DOT and then, and initiate some discussion that can come back to the council for a public open house, maybe in the form of an ordinance, so there's also a public hearing, rather than a resolution, and...
Did we say that?
We didn't do an ordinance, we just do a public hearing.
Resolution.
Yeah, just to make sure.
Have it on a regular board meeting, just have it for discussion only.
Yeah.
You don't have to actually vote, and...
That's true.
Depending on the timing, when you want to have it occur, and depending on what Dave's schedule allows, you could do that as well. Put it towards the end, have a full-blown discussion as well, without an actual vote, so.
But I think we're, you're on the right track, so. Okay, let's move on to reports from boards and commissions. The Library Board of trustee minutes of May 8, 2018, I think they're received in the record. The Bremer Waverly Law Board minutes, any comments of that?
Again, just to keep the council apprised, based on the age of the building, they're going through a period here where the HVAC equipment is just aging itself out, and when you have 20-some units that were installed on the same day, they stand, aren't failing on the same year, so they, we're just having to replace them faster than we'd hoped. So again, it isn't a huge impact to the budget, and there is some surplus there to work with, but next year's budget may be elevated a little bit, just to start covering some costs. And again, with the sharing arrangement that we have, our part of the share may go up a little bit, so.
Very good. Thanks, Dan. So the minutes are received in the record. Staff comments?
I don't think we have any tonight, sir.
Okay.
That's why we don't have any.
City council comments?
Well, do you want to, to kind of start, because we had some discussion a little bit beforehand amongst a few of us, but a couple topics have been emailed to us. Do you want to just kind of address that as a full, rather than have an individual councilman bring that up?
There seemed to be a concern, I think we all received a letter from a group of citizens on 12th Street Southeast, concerned about a turnaround at the bottom of the hill. And so, there's some concern from residents, whether it's valid or not. I think there's some confusion about what that turnaround is really for, whether it's connected to the bike trail, whether there's a trail from that turnaround to the river for fishing, whatever. It's a concern about parking, partying, and all kinds of things. I know, I drove down there yesterday, took a look. Several of the council people were down there today and visited, so is there, is it open for discussion, or do we need to...
You can't discuss something like that at the table without it being on the agenda.
Well, I understand.
Bill, or I will respond tomorrow to the full council, and then to the individuals as well, within that day or the next day.
All right, very good.
So it's been addressed.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I would like to thank Megan for her participation. Do you have anything that you'd like to voice to us? Give us your insights?
Not really.
Not really?
Okay.
I was parking down by Rod's.
Yeah. Good.
You park in the back, right?
Not in front. Okay, very good. Thank you for your participation again, and look forward to you having good things come to you. I would like to remind the council to get their four participants' names to Carla by July 9 for the strategic planning session. There's been a few turned in, but there needs to be some more. Anything, you know, would like to include some high school, youth, younger people. Carla had the list. I, I think several of you got the past participants, and, but she has a list, if you're, if you're struggling to find names of some, but...
Did you send that to all of us, Carla?
No, I told you I had it if you'd like it. So it's available to you, if you just need to let me know if you'd like it.
I would like it, if you, unless you sent it to me already, and I was...
I did not.
Okay, great. That'd be good.
I'd like that, too.
Maybe just a council email.
Yeah, I was kind of surprised. I had five or six people in mind, and I figured I'd get one or two no's, so I sent it to all six of them, and all six of them said yes. So if somebody runs a little short, I probably have a few people that I could send your way. But a lot of folks are interested in participating and adding their input, so, at least the ones I've talked to.
Okay. Reminder that, about the new utility billing system that's going into effect July 1. Hopefully, all the public has taken care of their June bills by check or cash or something, and made the proper arrangements if they want to. But also, as I understand it, eliminates the drop box that's in the alley at this facility to pay utility bills. It will be relocated up to the side of the building for dropping keys or whatever needs to be. So there is a drop box at Public Utilities by the front door, so those that need to feel better if they deliver their payment in person and get it in there. The big thing that's come up is several of us have had calls about fireworks. Starting at 11 o'clock today, they were legal to shoot. The hours that they can be used are noon to 10, Sunday through Thursday, noon to 11, Friday and Saturday, noon to 11 on the 4th, and there's a, I think it's noon to 11 on December, on New Year's Eve, which is ways away. If there are problems, I think Chief Purcell would accept a call that says, there's a problem in the neighborhood, and one of his officers would respond. Not sure what the consequences would be, but I know that there's been fireworks shot off for the last two or three weeks, probably about the time they went on sale. And if you're going to shoot them off, also take care of the debris, because there is certain amount, even the bottle rockets and things, but, so. But no, don't be afraid to make the call to the law center at 352-5400. And with that, I have no more comments, and I would entertain, if, entertain the motion to go into an executive session to evaluate professional competency of an individual whose appointment or hiring performance or discharge is being considered unnecessary to prevent needless and irreparable injury to that individual's reputation, and that individual requests a closed session. Do I have a motion?
I'll move that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor, say it. Roll call vote.
Yes.
Hengkow?
Yes.
Angus?
Yes.
Mackenzie?
Yes.
Rafi?
Yes.
Cher?
Yes.
Waldstein?
Yes.
Motion made, 7-0. We'll land her into executive session. Thank you all for your attendance. We'd like to take a short break before we get into that. That would be fine.